All right, good evening. Welcome everyone. We'll go ahead and call the Senator City Council meeting order for September ninth, twenty twenty five. Everyone in attendance, please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic.
With the stands.
One nation, under God, in the physical with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Josh, will you lead us in prayer?
Lord, we thank you that we get to come together tonight to discuss city business. Just pray your blessing on us as council members. And what we discuss, I pray that your blessing is on every single person that is here tonight during this meeting. And that we would get city business done and be fruitful. Guide us and lead us. You know, we pray Jesus. Amen.
Okay, sir, roll call.
Whit Thompson.
Here.
Justin Cowherd is not here. Wendy Henson.
Here.
Josie Reed.
Here.
Joshua Hagan.
Here.
And Cody Miles is not here. Mayor Bill Edwards.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. So first on the agenda is approval of the city council meeting minutes from August twelfth. We are in your Dropbox and there was one small change that was made just for the description of a resolution that we passed. It had their own company name that's been fixed and updated in Dropbox, so.
Josie, she got me.
She got you. So we have, uh, some like make, you have any questions? Some like make motion to approve those minutes?
Some may.
Got motion? We have a second?
Second.
All in favor? You want to pose?
Yeah.
Our next is acknowledgement receipt of the Water and Sewer Commission meeting minutes from July fifteenth and July thirtieth. And the planning commission meeting minutes from August fifth and August nineteenth. Some make big notion acknowledging the receipt of those? We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next is the finance report. And the August report is in there. We we put it in our last week. So right now we are three, two thirds of the way through the year, sixty six percent. Revenue wise, we're about seventy five percent. Revenue wise, we're right on track where we should be as far as what we're spending. A couple of things noteworthy though is this, we're still watching county sales tax and city sales tax. It seemed to have leveled out. City sales tax up a little bit, but the county just just kind of leveling out there. And I'm not sure what the cause that is. I know that it seemed like people might be slowing down on spending and things and different things, but so far we're still in very good shape, so. We're moving fine. It's not just our city. I've looked at some honestly, building permits. So we had a good month. We're 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 plugging right along there, so. And then all the departments overall are in in real good shape. And then we have the street fund sometime today. I should learn where the page down button is.
Yep, you do that and.
Yeah, sometimes go too far. Okay, street fund. So revenue wise, we're at sixty seven. That's where we should be. Expenditures are fifty three percent. He's got some outstanding bills for some road work we're doing and everything, so. That that all changed, so. And then the court report is attached also. So anybody have any questions on this? Make motion to approve the financial report and the court report for August twenty twenty. We have a motion. We have a second?
Yep.
All right.
I'll call out to Shannon. Thank you, Shannon, for always answering my questions in a short time. Appreciate you.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next department reports, they're all in there. And some of our departments are here, some are not because they're doing training and things. They're still getting back there to speak training. So fire and building inspectors are there, so. They might be on Zoom though, let's see. Uh, no. Yeah, yeah, they are. Matt's here if we want him. I'll meet them and so is Robert. So, okay, with that, anybody got any question on the finance? Department reports. All right, none. So next we'll have public comment. So this is a chance, if anybody wants to make any comments to the council. You you have the opportunity to come up here, anything tonight's meeting or something that you'd like us to know. You are limited to three minutes if you speak, and if you do, just come up to the microphone and use your name and address so he can put it in the minutes. So with that, I'm gonna go ahead and open public comments. So anybody like to make any public comment? State your name and address and then.
Sure. Name is Tom Sprouse. My address is twelve eleven Stony Brook Lane here in Centerton, despite it being a Bentonville address. First, I'd like to thank the Centerton Fire Department publicly for responding to our residents on August twenty second. My mother-in-law suffered a severe asthma asthma attack and had to be intubated in our driveway. And they took her off to Mercy and she's made full recovery. So just hope to say I appreciate them for all their hard work. Second order of business here, Cox Cable. I think we brought this up once before in a long time ago in the past. But it looks like on Centerton's website, title four twenty four, there's a cable franchise agreement with Cox. On four twenty four dash one, the mayor and the clerk entered into a franchise agreement. Dash two stated there was an immediate need, a declared emergency existed. It was a favorable benefit to the city residents. I'd just like to say that we moved here in twenty nineteen, the end of twenty nineteen, just before COVID. In twenty four months of signing with Cox for the two-year agreement, we spent over five thousand six hundred and forty dollars with them. If we would have had other options such as AT&amp;T Fiber, U-verse, Ritter Communications, that amount would have been thirty four eighty for savings of twenty one sixty. We had to lower our costs in our house, so we switched to internet only and scrap TV and phone service with them. At a hundred and fifty dollars a month for the last four years, it has accumulated seventy two hundred dollars in charges. So we spent well over ten grand in the six years living here with Cox Communication. So I would like to ask just about, not that anybody may or may not respond. About either rescinding or revitalizing the Cox Communications Agreement, if there is still one in place. So that our neighborhood, especially my street and the streets surrounding me in my neighborhood, could get options. I've spoken with AT&amp;T, I've spoken with Ritter, I've escalated this to their backline engineering folks, sales folks here in the Bentonville store. And they all have told me eventually after pushing for quite some time with each individual. That we need to speak with our city council to get this addressed. The AT&amp;T Fiber Service Man in Van asked my, you know, I was joking around with him one day. He was in the neighborhood right next to ours, which happens to be Bentonville. And he said, I would love to run fiber to your house, but you need to speak with your city councilman. So that is that first order of business. Second one is a stop sign at Kimmel and Greenhouse. A four-way stop would be very much appreciated. I know there's development plans, I think I heard, for a roundabout at that location. I don't know what the status of that is, but my son, who's eighteen, is just now learning to drive. And he avoids that intersection like the plague. Because we, my wife and I have been, you know, we go to the greenhouse Walmart there many, many times and. Pulling out and, you know, making a left-hand turn at any given time, any given time of day is is nearly impossible. There were one time I counted, we actually waited about nine minutes just to make a left-hand turn. So. That's all my public comments for tonight.
I'll address both of them. So first of all, Cox. We probably need to update our code. City does no longer franchise agreement with them. That's all handled by the Secretary of State. Actually, all the franchises for cable is now handled by them. Ritter, AT&amp;T, Wright Fiber. No, Ritter, Wright Fiber same, and then Bright Speeds here, so. And and they have to be willing to put it in. City council have anything to do with, you know, requesting it. It's all up to them wanting to put the infrastructure in. I know they're putting quite a bit in in this main part of the city. They're putting, because I get called all day, builders dig up my yard. But, you know, we have Wright Fiber, Bright Speed, Cox. We have the three. AT&amp;T is down there in that southwest part of town. You know, things like Quail Ridge, Quail Hollow, you know, that should be AT&amp;T in there.
That they are not allowed to put their lines in our neighborhood because city council has a contract with Cox Cable.
You do not.
And Cox Cable, when I went to talk with them at the store, they told me that they can charge me whatever they want because I have no other options.
No, we don't.
Had the same conversation with you guys three years ago and nothing has changed.
No, we don't control that. So anyway, as far as the stop sign that you're requesting, you got three jurisdictions in that intersection. You got Bentonville in one corner, you got Benton County on another corner, and you got us. And I've been to, you know, I've reached out to Bentonville about putting the four-way stop there. Their concern is the traffic will back up all the way up on one oh two. That was the major concern with it. Actually, you've noticed the speed limit's been lowered from forty five to forty. And that, no, I mean, it's not much, but it's every little bit counts. And that took an act of Congress because I had to go to Bentonville. And go to their Traffic and Signage Committee to to get that done. And they have a Traffic and Signage Committee that's made up of council member, fire chief, police chief. I don't know, three or four people on there. So, you know, we we got that, but they're not gonna do anything else. As far as the road widening, right now, right away, and easements are being acquired. They're in the process of doing that right now. Also, they're in contact with our utilities. Not just, there's thirteen utilities in that corridor between the two cities. So we're working, moving forward. I know, for instance, the electric company, they're at least a year out to move in theirs. And we're having that same issue out here on this highway too, so. It's up to them. But what I will do for you, if you sign, did you sign in? All right, I I will reach out to AT&amp;T and, you know, just let them know they can. I mean, if they want to put it in, you know, like. They have to give it to our utility department to get permission to work in the easement. You know, they they issue permits for these, but outside that, I mean, I could ask. All they can tell me is no. And I've talked, you know, there used to be a lady over there named Kathy Foraker, and I've talked to her many times about, you know, just getting AT&amp;T through the whole city. Not just there, just for another choice, so.
Tried Wright Fiber, but they said that there's, Cox is the only one that has permission. So there's three phases of Quail Hollow. And we're in phase two. And our entire phase is Cox only.
That sounds right, because I thought there's a Wright Fiber line going right down that, right down Greenhouse Road.
Five streets in our neighborhood and two of them are Cox only.
Put your phone number, did you put your phone number on there too?
I can.
Write it on there too, and I'll reach, I'll I'll reach out to AT&amp;T anyway.
I'm gonna update this on here.
Wright Fiber, like just.
We'll update them.
Be anybody other than Cox.
Because even though it's the most, Cox appears to be the most expensive.
They know it.
Their service drops.
No, I looked at a couple of others and the the internet was okay. This one went to TV, you know, well.
We only.
Because I I looked at one of the other companies across, because I I have all three of them right across the street here. And then the TV part was very high, the, you know, the TV on, anyway. I'll, if you get your phone number on there for me. I'll be happy to follow that up. Okay. Anybody else? Go on once? Twice? Okay, public comment is closed.
Regarding Greenhouse, as far as I remember, there was a fatal accident right in that area.
That's down there by 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 Quail Ridge, yes.
What part of that, if you're heading back north, belongs, is it is it the east side that belongs to the city of Bentonville? Is that why they're pushing that?
Yeah, the east side is is Bentonville, the west side is Centerton, for the most part.
How long has it been since we've we've brought that to their attention?
Probably a year.
Would it hurt for us to go reach back out and saying we're having some concerns? Can we do an accident report?
We can ask, and I think, is Alan here? Alan, come on up, let's talk about Greenhouse Road.
Also built.
He actually reached out, he actually reached out to him too.
Lot of houses on Kimmel, which is just making traffic worse.
Is there a way to find out too, if there's an accident report that shows like the safety aspect of it? Because clearly that's the the concern. Is there a way we can get a report to see if there's increased accidents in that area?
Let's say part of what they've done with some of the studies through Northwest Regional Planning is safety reports and to identify the high-risk network. And one of these things we get funding for for upgrades are your high-risk network roads. And what we have here, it's Greenhouse seventy two, one oh two, two seventy nine. Davis Paul, R dot roadways. And then Greenhouse, which is already in the books to have a safety improvement plan going through. Those plans are going through right now. We are in the acquisition phase to begin that widening. Acquisitions and utility locations take a while. So any kind of upgrades, they're really proposed what to do at Kimmel and Greenhouse or Glenn, whatever you want to call it. It was that the road you're on. When we went through the upgrades for that plan, for that intersection, one of the things they looked at was, you know, a signal or a four-way. And all those things, there's concern with how close it is to Highway one oh two and how long goes back up. And that's why the proposal going through is going to be a roundabout that allows to facilitate all that traffic through without causing backups and increase the safety.
We're looking at a couple of years before we even finish that.
Say acquisitions should be done. Next year, right away, we'll relocate, or utility relocations will start after that. It's gonna start from the north from one oh two and work its way down. So it'll take a little bit, yes, but even when construction starts, that'll block some of that traffic. And anything you're doing with that is a costly time measure, like just to be in place for a shortened period of time. They can go through the efforts of putting that four-way, but if you start doing that is, when you look at, when you start signaling or putting in, getting control in those intersections. Is the, not just the vehicles per hour and all that, and how things will back up. If you put a four-way stop there, the vehicles that go through, are you gonna have backups that go from Kimmel all the way down, back to one oh two or one oh two, down to. Kimmel themselves during that rush hour. So that's when those dangerous times are, that you can't turn left because the vehicles are already stopped and backed up to it. So.
I can really put a right turn only there either because there's a crossway as well.
Right. Yeah. Well, we know it's an issue. There are plans to upgrade it, make it a roundabout. But what is, I mean, called the speed of government is that the plan's been in place for a while, but to go through all of the permitting regulations. The bidding, the getting land, the construction, all of it takes time. So we are in the process of doing that.
So a simple four-way stop is not really simple. There's a little.
Not as simple, especially when you look at how many people need to approve it because of where it is. And like the mayor said, part of that's the county as well. So I believe Benton County would have to be involved with that as well.
It has to agree and.
Yes, Centerton does the maintenance on the west, Bentonville's the maintenance on the east side. But there is jurisdictions there where it's Benton County to the maintenance of the road. One comment on that is when you're, when you're on airport and you make a right onto Greenhouse. As you pass the Mavericks, then there's a storage facility. When you cross over like a little bridge that goes over a creek, as you just pass that bridge, there's a sign there that says, welcome to the city of Centerton. So it kind of implies that that road is Centerton.
Yeah, yeah, that's on, that's on the west side. East side is Bentonville.
If there's.
I know the signs there, there's a flock camera up there too, so that's just what they.
What police department spot?
Our police department responded to the fatality accidents you're referring to. Yeah, we, and then sometimes depending if if there's accidents at Kimmel and and Greenhouse. No, it's really not. They've actually went way down. There was quite a few. They they went down. But what I was gonna tell you is, it all depends what side of the road it happens on. If it's on the east side, Benton County does it. If it's on the west side, then we do it at that intersection. If it's south, it's Bentonville. It's very confusing that intersection. But no, I get notification that all the fire calls that go out and the accidents, I mean, we used to get them like real regular. I think reducing the speed limit, I think people just watch, you know, take a little bit more care, being careful. I mean, I know it's not a great situation. We are working to improve it.
Especially with the amount of houses that they're building over there.
And also we put a lot of opposition for trying to widen that too. We we had some opposition from folks that didn't want us to widen it, so. We had, we had, no, we had to work through that and we're we're moving on and we're moving forward with it, so. And Alan is actually our engineer who's been, you know, high representative for Centerton. That's why he knows quite a bit about it. Because I have him involved with it. He keeps me posted all the time on this, so. Right now, we're still working on some issues with utilities that we're gonna work through, but anyway, that's nothing to do with your concerns. All right. Thanks, Alan. Anything else?
It's good to remember that there's alternate routes also. So if you were gonna go to the neighborhood market, you left on Kimmel and take Will Mac and make a right turn on one oh two for safety. Especially if you're sitting there for ten minutes, so.
That's what we directed over eighteen.
That'd be wise.
I think we're blocking that, which is causing more traffic issues, but.
You got public comment?
I just have a question, really.
Well, yeah, just give us your name and address.
Glenn Elliott, one two two Hawes Street, Center Arkansas.
Go ahead.
I'm actually new here. I'm really young. I don't know what this is all about, so I kinda wanna know what's going on here. It's my first time ever showing up to one of these things.
Well, welcome. Glad to have you.
Thank you. I have noticed some about like this area, and I do have a question is like, the population's grown up a lot, right? Like a lot of all those complexes, all the buildings and whatnot, and that makes prices go up, right? That makes the people leave here that don't have enough money, you know, to live here. That've been here for like fifteen years, like myself. I gotta move now because the price is going up. And, you know, that's how it is. But, you know, I was just wondering, like. You have to make a certain amount of money to live here now. I mean, again, I'm new to this, so I'm really bad at this, but I'm just trying to.
It's a hard question for me to answer. I mean, you have to, I mean, housing, housing rent and everything here is is a little, little high.
You know, it's it's.
I don't know, I guess it all depends on your family, your income, and there's probably a lot of.
I can.
A lot of factors.
We had some opportunities where people have come in and wanted to develop either apartments or duplexes, and then we get pushed back too. So, I mean, I think we've tried to to manage that as best we can as a city.
And I will, I will tell you, I went to a conference last week, states looking at affordable housing as a whole for the whole state. Because you know what? I I think we do need some affordable housing here, you know, and everywhere, not just Centerton, but all all the area. So it's being studied by the legislators.
I I know a couple of friends that. I know a couple of friends of mine that just moved out of their parents' house, and they have the worst options to live in Centerton. And I'm gonna move out myself, and I'm gonna be honest, I don't kinda wanna live here because it's too expensive. That's not your fault. It's the population's fault. Not really the population's.
It's cheaper to live here than it is some of the others around us. It is sad, so. It's still high, but yeah.
Definitely on our radar for sure, but we certainly can't control the developers that come in and want to build certain things. I think the average house is around four thirty.
Yeah.
But affordable housing, is that right?
I don't know, I'm looking at it, I think I've seen a report. You're not real in there when it comes.
I think.
She's agreeing with you, honestly.
Pretty close, but I think there there is a lot of talk, even at municipal, even when we went there in in the summer, there's a lot of talk about affordable housing, so it's on our radar. It's just kind of hard to manage because you also have to have the developers that want to come in to build here. And then, of course, the zoning cuts, there's a lot more to it. But there are, there are, you can certainly reach out to me. I have some contacts that might help you find more affordable in the area.
Yeah, I'm new and I'm inexperienced in literally everything, so I'm just trying to get like a basis on what really is going on. That's why I came to here today. And, you know, prices are the one concerning me now because like I'm going to college, I got multiple things paid for car insurance, all this stuff is stacking up. And that's part of being an adult, I get that. But it's kind of getting to the point where I have to find an area where I have to get like a good job, but I know I can sustain a living. I looked at Centerton and, you know, it's gonna be hard, but I can do it. But I'm just wondering with people that can't, and you know, that have, again, lived here for like fifteen years, and have been loyal to this place, that have put money towards like the Senate, to, you know, pay you guys and whatnot. And they gotta leave. What happens to them, you know? I put their almost like half of their lives here, you know, now they're gone. You know, I guess that's part of life, and that's one thing that you gotta learn.
Very valid concern, so appreciate you coming forward.
Thank you.
You guys are good.
Anyone else? Okay, public comment is closed. All right, so next we're gonna get into ordinances and resolution. So before we start, would someone like to make a motion to read all ordinances and resolution by title only? And to suspend the rule requires to read on three separate occasions, all all ordinances.
I'm moved.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
I've been letting them have it. I want this one. For me to do this, but.
I'm about to duke it out over a second. Let's do a roll call.
Whit Thompson.
Yes.
Wendy Henson.
Josie Reed.
Yes.
And Joshua Hagan.
Yes.
All right, so our first ordinance is ordinance twenty twenty five dash forty six. This is accepting warranty deed for track D. This is about one point four six acres. This is a result of the final plat, we accepted last month from the pines up on Walton Road. This is the donated property for for our future pickleball courts. So and and probably had a public park too, so. So that's all there is to that. So any questions?
I just had a comment, and it's not specific to this, if that's okay. I just, because it was brought to my attention today, there was some concern about the pickleball courts and the shared. Like tennis versus pickleball and and the lower fencing versus the higher fencing. So the residents had reached out that said that they would rather have just pure pickleball and then the higher fencing, so the balls are not shoes balls. And there was a couple of other things. I think they were intending to send an email that didn't go through, so I just want to bring that up.
Okay. All right, so back to this. Any questions on this? Counselor?
Ordinance number two thousand twenty five dash four six, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and city clerk as representatives of the city of Centerton, Arkansas. To accept a warranty deed for track D arc of the final plat, the fine subdivision phase four, city of Centerton, Benton County, Arkansas.
Someone like make motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty five dash forty six.
I'm moved.
We have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, sir.
Whit Thompson.
Yes.
Wendy Henson.
Yes.
Josie Reed.
Yes.
Joshua Hagan. Yes.
Next is ordinance twenty twenty five dash forty seven. This is just establishing an electronic fund payment system. This is required by legislative audit, if we want to, anything electronically. And we see a lot of cities doing this now, so we want to go ahead and do.
Guys, we, there's, there's actually an emergency clause in. Two thousand twenty five dash four six.
There is.
There is, but I'm not sure that we need it.
I don't see.
My position to, let's strike through that, yes.
Okay, I can strike through it before we sign it. Yeah, I I don't see an emergency either. We need to do any action on that?
Uh, let's go ahead and just get it on the record that. Go ahead and run through it again, just with the section four stricken through.
All right, someone like make motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty five dash forty six, striking section four.
Can I have a question real quick? Could this be for like ma, the maintenance of it is why the emergency clause is there?
No, I I I don't think so. I mean, it's, there's gonna be a a significant emergency that would. Cause us to to have to accept this right now rather than wait in the the typical waiting period that that we wait after ordinances. So and I mean, we're just accepting the.
The deed.
The deed at this point, right? So nothing's gonna happen for probably a year or more. I would suspect. Is that correct, Mayor?
Yeah, probably. I mean, what, maintain it and stuff, right?
So that means, so there's no reason to make it.
We'll maintain it regardless, so, okay. What was that motion again, or what I was asking for?
Just to, yeah.
To to adopt resolution twenty twenty five dash forty six, removing.
Section four stricken.
Or section four stricken. Okay, that, someone like to make that motion.
Make that motion.
Okay. Second is again. I thought Josh wanted that one. Oh.
Roll call.
Yeah.
Whit Thompson.
Yes.
Wendy Henson.
Yes.
Josie Reed.
Yes.
Joshua Hagan.
Yes.
All right, now we're.
I gotta be quick tonight.
Now we're at ordinance twenty twenty five dash forty seven, which I already explained, you know, basically it's establishing electronic payment. So. Questions?
I just, it seems like a dumb question, but like, what does this mean to make electronic payments? Can you not pay?
Well, legally, you can't do it without without a procedure in place.
Pay with a card? The city can't pay?
No, 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 I'm talking about like if we want to pay the gas bill by electronic funds. Yeah, instead of writing a check, we can electronic. And there's some things like we pay, well, there's some things like. Payroll thing, the taxes and. Child support, things like that. All, that's all electronic funds, so we need a policy in place to cover that.
Okay.
Yeah, no, it's, I I hear you. I agree with you. I I said the same thing.
Writing it's clear.
Gotta save a little time.
Yeah.
All right, are we ready?
Yep.
Ordinance number two thousand twenty five dash four seven, city of Centerton, Benton County, Arkansas. An ordinance establishing an electronic funds payment system in compliance with the information systems and best practices and authorizing the city clerk to establish written policies and procedures for the same.
Emergency clause.
No.
Okay, someone like to make motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty five dash forty seven.
Make a motion.
We have a second?
Second.
Second by Joseph. Roll call.
Whit Thompson.
Yes.
Wendy Henson.
Yes.
Josie Reed.
Yes.
And Joshua Hagan.
And Joshua Hagan.
Yes.
Alright, I'm gonna bring Diane for this next one. This is ordinance twenty twenty-five dash forty-eight. Uh, this is amending, amending our, uh, zoning map. Uh, this was brought up at the last, uh, planning meeting. They did have a public hearing. Were no comments. There are a couple of questions, but no comment.
Questions, but not any comments.
Well, I asked Diane if she would come and just, you know, give us, give us, uh, an update what we're doing. I just really was trying to match the zoning code, so.
Correct. This does not change Title fourteen at all. We're just updating the map so that it, everything that's actually built coincides with what the zoning should be. Um, because in twenty twenty-one, we rezoned, the city re-zoned, um, several properties from R three used to be R three, you had to choose your zoning, whether you wanted single-family, multifamily, or duplex. Well, that kind of created a legal nightmare, so back in twenty twenty-one, we changed it so that we have R three, single-family, R three duplex, R three multifamily, and then R four multifamily, which is now our highest density use. That's for like apartment complexes and up to eighteen units per acre. Um, so when we did that rezone, we just kind of looked at what was already in place on the ground, and there were a couple of things that we missed or that, you know, inadvertently got changed. Um, so we're just kind of updating those things. And also when, um, West End Estates came in, they were in the county, so when they were brought into the city, they were annexed as just agriculture, but when they planted the lots, they did plant it to be our one single-family residential, so, but none of the changes will impact anybody's property lines, anyone's setbacks, or the density for any of the particular projects. Uh, and also in twenty twenty-three, we updated the R T H M F twelve and R T H duplex, which are the townhome styles where they're each sold on individual lots where they could be separate units. Well, when we did that, we didn't update the map, so we're updating the map to reflect those changes. So like number two on there, those were all R T H M F twelve. So now they're just R T H five, which is just the new zoning designation. It doesn't change anything on the plats, doesn't change anything for the property owners. Um, another one is further down on the map. Um, it's, was R T H duplex, now it's just R T H two. Um, so we just kind of cleaned those things up. The, uh, Crystal Cove, like I said, those are the ones that went from the R T H M F twelve to the R T H five. And in the packets, it also has the actual zoning code that goes to those districts. So if you have any questions on those, it does include those. Um, we also looked at the Copper Oaks subdivision. When they were built, they are all duplexes. And when they were built for the, um, building code at that point in time, they probably, they could have been divided, but now they cannot be divided to be sold separately, so we have reverted that zoning to the R three duplex because you cannot, you cannot split them because they are not built to be split. Um, the same thing with, um, number seven on there, that is Willow Crossing Townhomes. They're townhomes, but they're not built to be divided, so they are the R three multifamily, which allows up to four units attached. And the Commercial Street Townhomes, those on Commercial Street over there, they're the Arc Street Commercial. Um, they are, they were built to be townhomes, so we changed their designation from R three multifamily to the R T H five, because they can actually be sold separately. And then there's the Bliss Street, um, the Art Homes on Bliss Street. We noticed when they, when we did a rezoning for the Church of Latter Day Saints that, why is that multifamily? They're single-family homes. They're just all on one lot. So we changed that one to R three, single-family because they are actually single-family homes. So, but that's, we did, everybody was notified, a hundred and fifty mailings later, later. Um, but we didn't have any comments. We had some questions from people just to make sure that it wasn't gonna impact their property taxes. I'm like, no, nothing changes because you're still using it the same as it's always been used. So that doesn't change. And also there was one lot in the Woodcrest Walk subdivision that was just planted recently that their plans were always to do threeplexes and fourplexes on one lot. Well, our new zoning for the R three multifamily, which is what it was originally zoned, doesn't allow for that. So since it was already planned and planted, that one is the R four multifamily, but due to the size of the lot and the setbacks that they are required to have, they can't do anything different than what's currently planned for that lot.
I have a question kind of related to this, but I felt like it was appropriate for this time. So Hope Hill, which is on, is Bentonville off, it's Bentonville, so it's at the end of of Main Street, you know, selling those duplexes individually. So how does, how does this, like, like for instance, like you were talking about Copper Oaks? They're not built to be sold separately, so we move in that direction, which I'm seeing like in Bentonville that people are buying just one side of a duplex. Will that change the zoning code, um, at all? Will that impact us at all?
Um, no, we do have several that are built that way right now.
Okay.
They are the R T H duplex.
Okay.
That means that they're planted on each their own separate lots, and they have to meet certain building and fire code standards to be able to be sold separately.
Good to know.
So.
The A one for Bentonville West and the church right in there, is that, why aren't we cleaning that up?
We don't have a zoning for public uses or, um, anything. So right now they're A one, just because. Schools and churches are A one.
They have conditional use permits on both.
Right. Correct. They do both require conditional use, but we don't have a public or municipal zoning code, so that's why they've just remained the A one. Or we would have fixed that too. So I said, it's just clean up. It doesn't change the use of anyone's property or change the density of anything, just kind of a clean up while we had a little bit of time to breathe.
But Diane and Joshua, because this one does have an emergency clause, and I, I, I think we're gonna bring. I'll let you explain that a little bit, but I think it's essentially because it's already.
It's already there.
We made this up, right?
Need to clean it up and you know, just so that everything matches each other with Title fourteen and the map.
Thanks for pointing it out. That knew.
Qualifies. Thank you.
What does qualify for emergency?
Well, I mean, truly only the courts will make a determination whether it qualifies or not. So I mean, you know, I understand there's not like a, a, a book that I can look and see this qualifies. But I mean, there, there needs to be some sort of urgency, exit circumstance that requires us to.
In your professional opinion?
In, in my professional opinion, I think because it is what it is, yeah. It's probably just qualifies for emergency clause.
Does it have any other questions? Alright.
Alright, counselor, let me get the orders back up there. Great.
Alright, city of Centerton ordinance number two thousand twenty-five dash four eight, an ordinance amending Centerton Municipal Code Title fourteen zoning map. Amending section fourteen point oh four point oh three titled zoning map. Amending zoning district changes for R T H dash two and R T H dash five and changes to correctly reflect zoning designations for the property used per Centerton Municipal Code Title fourteen point oh four point oh four zoning districts and declaring an emergency.
Someone like to make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-five dash forty-eight?
I'm moved.
We have a motion. We have a second? I should also have. Roll call, sir.
Girls. Cliff Thompson. Yes. Wendy Henson.
Yes.
Josie Reed. And Joshua Hagan. Yes.
Marge.
Alright, section seven, the city council of the city of Centerton, Arkansas hereby declares an emergency, and this ordinance being necessary for the immediate protection of the public peace, health, and safety shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approval.
Someone like to make a motion to adopt the emergency clause?
Motion.
Who got a second?
Second.
Alright, the guys, that time. Roll call, sir.
Cliff Thompson. Yes. Wendy Henson.
Yes.
Josie Reed.
Yes.
And Joshua Hagan.
Yes.
Next is ordinance twenty twenty-five dash forty-nine. This is just accepted a bond from, uh, from, uh, Milestone Construction, who is building their, add on to the police department. This is just warranty their work, so it's a drainage bond for forty thousand that we accept. Forty thousand, six oh two thirty-eight. So, any questions? Albert.
City of Centerton ordinance number two thousand twenty-five dash four nine, an ordinance accepting warranty bond for drainage improvements for Centerton Police Department, Centerton located at two twenty municipal drive in the city of Centerton, Arkansas, section oh four, township nineteen, range thirty-one, Benton County, Arkansas.
Someone like to make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-five dash forty-nine?
I'm moved.
We have a second?
Be Justin today.
Second. Roll call.
Okay, thank you.
Second by Josh.
Cliff Thompson. Yes. Wendy Henson.
Yes.
Josie Reed.
Yes.
And Joshua Hagan.
Yes.
Alright, our last, yeah, our last ordinance is ordinance twenty twenty-five dash fifty. This is accepting warranty bonds for public infrastructure improvements at Willow Crossing of lot two D dash one, which is on Cedar Street. And it's a water sewer bond for a hundred eighty-seven oh twenty-two fifty. Drainage bond for one seventy-three, two forty-nine oh nine. Albert.
City of Centerton ordinance number two thousand twenty-five dash fifty and ordinance accepting warranty bonds for public infrastructure improvements for Willow Crossing Lot two D one located at Cedar Street in the city, uh, Centerton, Arkansas, section three, township nineteen, range thirty-one, Benton County, Arkansas.
Someone like to make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-five dash fifty?
I'm moved.
And we have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
Alright, roll call.
Cliff Thompson. Yes. Wendy Henson.
Yes.
Josie Reed.
Yes.
Joshua Hagan.
Yes.
Alright. Our first resolution, and only resolution is resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-six. Uh, this is a purchase, uh, and this is really just ordering it. Uh, this takes about eight months to get this truck. This is, this is, uh, order a dump truck of freightliner, one oh eight S D chassis and dump bed, which is also capable, have a snowplow and can remove and everything else, so. Come to me and said that they were in need of another dump truck, uh, this amount of workload, so, um, this, this will be ordered if, if y'all approve this, and we won't get it sometime next year. We already had the funds for it. Just we'll come out of the street. So, any questions?
Alright, resolution number two thousand twenty-five dash three six, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk as representatives of the city of Centerton, Arkansas to enter into an equipment purchase agreement with Industrial Truck Equipment Incorporated, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma for the purchase of a freightliner, one oh eight S D truck and accessories.
Someone like to make motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-six?
Mayor, can I back up just a second?
Yeah.
I have a question. Is, is, do we need to waive bidding on this?
No, this is, this is on Sourcewell.
Okay.
Yeah, I have it down in section three.
Yeah, I saw it there. I just wanted to make sure I covered that.
Okay, it's, it's Sourcewell Purchase.
Carry on.
Carry on, okay. You're at the time, right, so we're adopted.
Made a motion.
I'll second.
Motion at a second. Roll call.
Cliff Thompson. Yes. Wendy Henson. Josie Reed.
Yes.
Joshua Hagan.
Yes.
Alright, uh, getting on to other business, uh, Centers and Utilities update. You all have any updates from our last meeting? I'll just provide an update. The utilities director is, is at the statewide water services meeting in Hot Springs this week, and TJ Wells is there also, and he is completing his training as required by state law. Okay. Uh, what's sorry, about the, uh, all of the minutes through August of twenty-five now posted on the website? Any other question? Yeah, I, I have a couple here. So, uh, when we met, when we met a couple of weeks ago, talked about a capacity list, where we were told that we would get that pretty quick. Um, we have not. That is a planning department issue. Well, you guys. Seems to be some just there seems to be a disagreement between the head of the planning department and the facilities director as to who is going to maintain that list. They've agreed on prioritization, but not who's going to maintain. I'm watching. I'll take care of that. If, no, nobody transmitted that to me, so I didn't have no you know, I just, you know, I have to ask the question and I got the answer I got. And then also, uh, and she's probably gonna ask a question, but I think they requested the recordings. I didn't see those anywhere. We are, uh, we're working on that. That question I had, which was brought to me by Councilmember Reed, is, uh, we talked a little bit about pinch points. I know that we gave that information to the engineer, their engineer, you know, Anderson's engineer gave it to our engineer. We're just kinda see if you have any updates on that. I'll have a further update on that. The facilities director's out this week. She had something for you.
Yeah, um.
Well, I'm sorry, Councilman Henson had something for you, not she.
She, so that's fine. Uh, okay. Um, so on the director's report, it says utility commission has requested our consultant engineer ESI to start on design plans for potential connection to NACA system. Um, and then it says we pretty much stopped that because of Decatur. Was that the plan? I mean, that's just the way I'm reading. I'm trying to understand, like, that was not y'all's plan originally before Decatur came in and said, hey, we're potentially, you know, be able to expand out here, and there may be an issue. Because that's kind of the way I'm understanding it, but I, I thought we would be part of that decision, so I was used on that. Just wanted some clarification. Because ESI is being paid to start on design plans for potential connection, which I can understand if that was the direction we were going.
Yeah, we had looked at that. I expect there'll be a final decision at our meeting next week on the nineteen.
You talking about originally eleven years ago or current?
Ear- ear- earlier this, earlier this year, we began looking at, was there an option?
For NACA. Correct. Okay.
Alright. Uh, they've looked at it. Uh, they're gonna bring to us, uh, some plans. And I expect we'll make a final decision that are in. On the night.
I was essentially referring to our last, the special counsel, because they were talking about the, you know, if, if we're not gonna go to the theater, then it's not what we need to know because it's a lot of money on the line, et cetera, et cetera. So that's what kind of threw me off on this particular part.
I confused because we had thought about going to NACA.
Right.
For Decatur.
Right, because it was getting more expensive, right? And I, that was my understanding this time, was it gonna be a lot more money? So my concern was, you know, is money being spent to for design plans for connection to NACA? And, and it sounds like that's been held off, but I just didn't understand that was the direction that y'all were planning to go. I just wanted to clarify.
What we're doing with NACA is a feasibility study. To determine which is, which is the best option.
Okay.
You know, which is better. If, if we decided to connect to NACA, which would be the best option for us? Where to connect, you know, where to run pipelines, and if even connecting to NACA is, is feasible.
So I guess my other question would be, is, is the council involved in decision on Decatur versus NACA? Or is that only commission's decision?
We are.
That, that's our decision.
Okay.
It's an operating issue. We'll come back to you. In any case, if it requires a large capital expense, we can get another shot at it because we'll have to come back with the bond issue.
That's all I have. Thank you.
I have, I have a couple of questions, guys. You shouldn't hear me over them. I'm talking loud. Uh, uh, that came across really different than I intended. Uh, page two, on page two of the special meeting that you had, uh, fourth paragraph down. I just wanted to state my agreement with this paragraph where it says there was discussion that in agreement with the Decatur wastewater treatment plant may be necessary along with continued coordination with their engineers to ensure Centerton maintains distant communication regarding wastewater capacity and performance and planned infrastructure improvements. This approach would help ensure timely planning, accommodate future growth, keep Centerton informed of any additional expansion plans, and if necessary, secure the terms that protect Centerton's interests. Actually, you know, I, I Actually, you know, I, I. Complete agreement with that, so, uh, love to see what that goes in the future.
Meeting with them on Friday.
Our regular, our regular meeting is on Friday. It's a regular monthly meeting now with Decatur.
On Friday, oh, okay.
It will be this Friday. It will be this Friday.
Public or is that you guys?
The working session.
Okay.
There are no decisions made, the working session. Review the progress, talk about wild guns, what we need to do or don't do.
And then you'll provide an update at the next meeting of that meeting, or?
It's an operations discussion at this point.
Discussion, no, no decision being made.
Informational meeting.
I just, I was just curious if you were going to bring it up, that's all, that's all I was saying.
Well, we, I don't.
So is that what in the next paragraph says maintain regular communication with the plan, no, no, this plan it aren't. Maintain regular communication with the planning department regarding wastewater capacity issues. I read their minutes, there was a lot of discussion on this, has this been implemented yet? This was dated, I think, July thirtieth.
That's the capacity study, that's the capacity, you know, the priority list.
I think the priority list was discussed in the, uh, in the commission meeting, the planning commission meeting. This is just maintaining regular communication with the planning department regarding wastewater capacity issues.
I believe.
Potential capacity limits, yes, I was reading for.
It's being addressed.
It is, it's the, they're being met, you guys decided to do a regular meetings, communication with them?
The utilities director and the planning director, I'm sure, planning staff, I'm sure being.
And I talked to Don a little bit about this prior to the meeting, and since I saw it down here in a little bit, I would just like for you guys. Just on record, kind of relay with what you relayed with the decentralized water treatment system. Uh, I was under the understanding this was not a viable solution. I just, from our conversation, I'm thinking it's not, I just would like it to be.
On the advice of legal counsel. We stopped all action, proposal to allow decentralized wastewater treatment services. Within our, within our area, okay?
That's the back nine two five.
Excuse me.
You too, the, the new law.
Nine thirty five. By some legal counsel, we've stopped all action on that.
I'll have, thanks.
Anything else for water and sewer? All right, next is, uh, policy updates, so a couple of weeks ago, I sent out different policies, everybody. Jocelyn's here. I don't know if y'all want to have any in particular you want to talk about, or have any concerns with. Uh, we vetted this through staff. And we like to do on these policies, if you're all good with them, is move with them. Uh, they would not go in effect until January first. Except, except for the temporary hiring policy. What prompted that is we use a temporary service right now, we've been having a hard time getting folk, we pay them twenty one dollars an hour. Uh, if we find somebody that we like, sometimes we got to buy this out with them, because we have to keep them a certain amount of time. So this will enable us just to, you know, pay them, the temp services pay them, save the cities money. If we want to keep them on board or something, we have that control of it.
We already do seasonal employees, and this will be similar to that, we'll just have to add a, a code that. Reads temp, and then also, I, I did put together a temporary to permanent. And fully conversion process to where if we do, it's going to keep somebody on a permanent basis. You know, option, I don't know. What, how long they would have to work before we consider them for permanent, you know, things like that, so. There are two before we, if, I think, are two that I'm going to ask if maybe I can bring them to you guys next month. Because I thought I had, uh, finished with them, and I did not, I'm sorry about that. One is artificial intelligence, because I got some feedback from Brian, and. I have some questions for him as well, but I haven't gotten with him. And then the other one is reporting and verifying hours, so if we can leave those two out of tonight. And I can send those back to you guys when, once I have them completed, and then maybe just get them approved. Since, since they're going to be, we're aiming for one, one twenty six. But if you guys have any questions about any others, I did. Uh, get some, uh, your feedback and. Appreciate that.
Any questions? Sound like make a motion to approve the policies as presented, except. For the artificial intelligence policy and the reporting verifying policy to go in effect, one, one of twenty six. Except for the temporary employment policy, which would go in effect immediately.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Good job, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, next. Bob just kind of alluded on this, uh. Well, I'm going to bring up Gavin Edwards and Tom Bartlett. Uh, they, they were advised of Act nine thirty five. And Gavin actually called me, said he's been in contact with the health department. I don't know if you want to start off the conversation with that.
So. I wasn't able to make the, uh, special meeting that was held, uh, with everyone here, but obviously Skip Anderson was here. And I, I did, uh, listen to the entire YouTube video, follow up with that, have some questions for Skip. Funny thing is, Skip's not here tonight, so I said, hey, watch YouTube tonight, you know. But, uh, anyway, based on that conversation and understanding that, uh, there was a very direct. Uh, comment made by the commissioners that, you know, decentralized systems are not allowed, and therefore. They had kind of pushed that aside as an option. Well, I contacted the state health department directly, Ryan Prision Shin, talked to him at detail. Um, there is some language about a, you know, provision that does, uh. Not allow certain types of decentralized systems, but my case of what I'm looking at doing, they're still allowed. They are still a viable option, based on the health department approving them, engineering. Soil testing, all the other things, you still have to comply, there's still a compliance that has to happen. But it's still allowed. Um, so Tom is the person who does these systems, not only here in, in Arkansas, but all over the country. And so he's very familiar with different languages in the law and the bill, and the reason why there may have been some misunderstanding. But the frustrating part for me as a developer is, again, here I am going like Skip is, doing the work for the commissioners and the people at the Centerton Utilities. I understand Skip knew more about the engineering of the systems than your own engineers do. And passed on information to help them out. Well, here I am, helping to pass on information to help them out again. Uh, of course, it benefits me, because I have a project that's stuck, like many others, until some of these things can be resolved. So I feel like that the city council needs to be informed and educated on not only the legal aspects of the law. But the rest of the planning department, everybody else that makes the decisions. And understands, again, this, this back and forth of not following through is getting real frustrating from the, the side of the developers. It seems like we're having to do the, the work of, uh, you know, what we supposedly shouldn't have to do as much of. But anyhow, here's Tom, he is Aqua Tech, and he can explain to you, and he'll probably start off by reading the actual law and how that works. Yes, go ahead, Joshua.
I just have, I have a question, prior to getting into the system itself, how long will it take to build?
How long would it take to build a system?
The, the system that you're needing.
Oh, just depends on the size of it, but we can build it and have it on site within a few months.
A few, a few months.
It's not, it's not a long.
Takes, the permitting is going to take a while with the state, but we can build them and get.
Okay, thank you, maybe to clarify my question, how long will it take to get it to where it functions the way you need it to use it?
So you still have to go through the process of the city, you know, approving the system within that. And then sending to the health department and having them approve it, so that's obviously a slower process, but the actual.
How long, I just wanted to put it in.
Go see the health department, which is, you know, a few months, then it goes through the ADQ, so you're probably looking at maybe nine months to a year. Total, to have everything on site and working.
Gavin, this is just my question, it's based on our meeting the other day, and what I know, or what we now know from Decatur. You know. Assuming, and I don't, and not an assumption, uh, Decatur has. Trust and believes that they will have their approval in December. And should they have their approval, then this system would be, I mean, you, you would be halfway through your process. And then you wouldn't even be able to build it.
If, if he's in the, if he's in the front of the line.
Are you, well, are you, well, I don't think it's front, or you are.
Either way, so it's, it, the, the challenge becomes, again, the city's own pinch point problems that they'll discuss. You're still got a year and a half before that stuff, if they are completed, a year and a half. And I'm here to tell you, based on what they're saying and what they're doing, and they keep changing. Is probably two years before that's really a viable option and online to be able to connect any of them. Even if there is capacity.
Let's say it's two years, let's say it's two years out, takes you a year to get this built. And then a year after it's built, you have to tear it down, you have to turn around and make it as if, I'm going to say as if it wasn't there. Uh, environmentally, as if it wasn't there, I don't know how that.
Nothing to do environmentally, there's nothing to do environmentally. You can just remove the plant and that's, that's sufficient.
And, and there's an option.
It's a clean water drip field, so they're putting clean water into the soil, they would just pull that up, and he can actually build on those lots.
Gavin, at this, at, I guess at this juncture, I'm, a question to you, you would find this financially viable for you? If it, in two years, you have to remove it, like, so you basically could start your building, have people move in one year in advance.
That's what I'm hearing, it's still a financially feasible deal, because the timeframe, quite honestly. Based on the, uh, information received, lack there of it, the accuracy of it. I don't have very much faith in the rest of the information I've been receiving, so I have the, the option, like, again, it's an option for me. And it's a financially feasible option, because most of what I've been explained to and about still has a lot of, I don't know, or we're still working on it. Well, I know this will work, and I know the timeframe within which I can get it to work. Versus, well, we're still working on it, we're not sure. That's a big reason.
And he also can resell the treatment plant, so there's money for him there. He'll resell it back into the.
It's, it's Gavin's money, I just wanted to know, I, I mean, I'm just looking at a year out, in one year, he just, I was trying to make.
The other thing, Joshua, is the time value of money, as you understand, if I'm able to produce lots and get them online, and can sell them, while everybody else is still waiting, I could probably command a higher price for them. My lots are bigger anyways, you guys know Big Sky and one of the few subdivisions have larger lots. And I'll be able to sell those quicker and better, at a higher premium than probably anybody else waiting around to get something done. The, the time value, the money that's sitting there in the, uh, and the interest payments on that are substantial. So you start knocking, yeah, it's financially feasible to do it.
Well, I have a question, so.
Yes.
Talk about this person with, uh, ADH. Did you ever get us any documentation or email or something that, that shows this is, uh, permitted, so we can have our.
The bill right here.
We got the bill too, and their attorney already looked at it and said it's not feasible, so.
I was informed, I spoke directly to the ADQ.
What I'm asking though, do you have something from the ADQ that we can have our attorneys look at, their attorney had a.
It gets any clearer than this, but yes.
So the answer is no.
I'll call and said, send, send me an email, guys.
Send us something, so we. Yeah, I mean, we all have that bill too, so.
All I got to do is look at B, that is the answer to your, your question right there.
Let's look at B together, hold on, I got, I got B.
Totally misinformed.
I have B, old Jewer.
Yeah, I think an email was.
Seeking approval.
Section, section one.
Applicants seeking approval demonstrates that there is no viable cost effective alternative by submitting a feasibility study. For the connection to the existing public owned treatment works that has a collection system within five miles.
And speak with the ADQ, what they stated is no sewer available, Decatur. The cost of going to a sewer line is prohibitive, it's five miles away, three miles away, two miles away. Way more expensive to do that for a subdivision than a wastewater treatment system. And when the time comes, if they want to bring the line up, they can just take it offline, hook up, and resell it into the market. It's literally that easy.
I don't want to speak for my attorney, but I think these attorneys probably would like to see something from ADH. I mean, I've.
Well, I want to make clear, the, 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 the advice to.
Yeah, they're different.
Is a completely different attorney, I, I don't know where they came up with that or, or whatnot, so I mean, I, I'm not. In a position to give any opinion today on it.
Anyway, they asked if they could make a presentation to council, they said it'd be about ten, twelve, fifteen minutes, I said it would be fine, so.
We, we were, you know, we were just going to answer questions on what decentralized is, we haven't been in front of this body before. And, you know, we, we can go through a presentation, we don't have to do the full thing, but just so you understand that this is not a septic system. This is a wastewater treatment plant, just like, well, give you example, we did all of Cave Springs for seventeen years. They were able to grow because they had my wastewater treatment plant there, all approved. Heifel, same thing, they were able to grow because they had my treatment system there. And we have that all across the nation, many cities will allow it to allow them to grow. And then when the time comes, they'll hook up to something else, or they'll keep the system over and actually own it themselves and operate it like sewer fees. Steve, the developers, oops, the developers in Cave Springs actually gave them the system to the city for free. So they got all that, all that assets for free, plus they were collecting fifty dollar per month on sewer fees from about fourteen hundred homes. And that was because of our wastewater system. They now just recently took it offline and they're hooked up to NACA because they came very close to them. Here, you don't have that possibility, but when it does come around, all you have to do is take it offline and hook up to, to NACA. Or Decatur, or wherever you want to hook up to, it's really that simple. So they have a collection system, a treatment system, it may, I don't know who's, are you running that, or?
I'm right, I'm right, I'm ready, I got it.
Oh, you've got us.
Ready to change range.
Down a little bit, I'll just.
Tell me where you want me to go.
So that's just a settling tank where the solids come in and settle, there, it's a pre-treatment tank, you can go down. I'll try to go through this, uh, keep going. We also have a step system where there's a tank at the home. You can, you can use a low pressure system, developers like that, everything stays at the home, and just the water goes to the treatment plant, you can keep going. I should, and there's a, there's the system right here, so the tank on the left is where, if you have a gravity system where everything settles. The next smaller tank in the middle is an equalization tank, and the tank on the right is the actual wastewater treatment system. And right after that tank, it goes in a tank and is pumped out to a drain field or a drip irrigation field. That's the complete system right there for the whole thing. These are anywhere from probably three thousand to three hundred thousand gallons. We can go up to three million gallons. So we have cities, we're putting a one million gallon per day system in for a city in North Carolina, they're going to be using us for that. Many different designs, many different, the, the technology is designed in many different ways to reach. Higher standards or lower standards on the water discharging. In Arkansas, it's a very low standard for drip irrigation, thirty on BOD and forty five on TSS, very simple to do, very easy to do. Do you want to go down a little bit? It, it looks like that, that's what it looks like, the, right there. That's media in the tank that actually where the biology grows, and that's what treats the wastewater, is the biology on that media right there. That, that treats it. It has air in the bottom, aeration, uh, diffusers in the bottom to give it air. I don't know, guys, if you have any questions, I'm trying to go fast in, in respect for your time, so if you have a question, please throw it out here. Uh, it could go through a UV system which disinfects from pico coliform. And that would be the, the last tank, that would be the pump tank that would pump to the drip field, the drain field that, that is behind the treatment plant. Keep going. That just was, and there's the drip field right there. It goes about eight to twelve inches underneath the soil, it's a half inch pipe under pressure in a dosage, so many gallons per day in that square foot of soil. So it's under pressure and controlled. Example, it really is, it's just very compact, so developers, you know, we put many systems in for small systems. I forget what yours was, seventy two homes, I believe, so yours, how many gallons was that, did I tell you? It, it's probably around fifteen, sixteen, seventeen.
Gallons per day, per, per two point eight people a household. Hundred eighty gallons per house.
But I just had a comment, we had that special meeting over at the city hall. And one of the concerns with the attorney and the, the commission was the language that protects the. You know, not to say you're going to go belly up, but that is, how do we protect? That there's not any liability back on the city or any, anything that we have to manage or. That there's not any liability back on the city or any, anything that we would have to manage or, you know, he.
Because these are operated by an operations company like mine, we have operations, I operate plants all over Northwest Arkansas. We were operating K Springs for years, we have many of them all over, so we actually operate them. You guys don't operate them unless you wanna take it over.
I was gonna say, it's more, I think, just the more of the legality and the, the legal language within the contract that makes sure that everybody's protected and all the As are not and Ts are crossed.
We have those contracts.
Timeline is gonna be in the sense of, you know, if this was to come that, into that direction and then the gravity flow versus the other, is there any language that states that you can only do gravity flow or does it matter?
Ours, it doesn't matter, we have a contract that would go either way, but I mean, there's multiple different ways of writing it, but the operations company would be responsible for the treatment plant. And any of the tanks, if there's a step system in, if it's gravity, that would be something that would, the city would, when, when the time comes would take over when it goes to another.
To help you on my, my side. And again, this may not work on everyone's side or every particular subdivision that's out there, so I don't want you to think that this is the gonna be a solve the problem for everybody, it doesn't. Uh, but it does give options to some of us that can do it. The way that my land lays, I could get everything pretty much to gravity flow to the system, in other words, to the treatment plant. And then I can actually get it to gravity flow to the manhole that I already built, for phase two that was to collect phase three anyway. So, simple terms, it can be built or engineered in a way that the gravity flow system would be no different than if the entire system was gravity flow, manholes, piping, you know, ditches and gravel bedding to city specs. Until you get to the lot where the treat, treatment plant sits. And then it is turned over to him and he takes the collection over at that point. And the homeowners, through the POA, as part of the POA distribution, pay their share of the sewer to help pay for that treatment.
Or they would just, we, we also build directly, they don't have to go through the POA, we just build them directly, just like a utility company, just like your utility company builds your people.
But then again, when there was enough capacity in Decatur, whether that's December, two years, five years from now, then it's a simple, really, if we planted ahead of time, we can actually put a Y in the system, take the treatment plant off, off, you know, operations. Connect, turn a valve essentially, and connect to the manhole that's already there to the southwest. And ta, take out the, the treatment plant and use that space again for building houses. So there's, there's a benefit to the developer being able to do all that, like he said, but even if you don't ever take over the, the treatment plant system itself, as the city, you have no liability at that point. It all becomes back to you, only after and within when you take over normal operations of what you would have normally taken if there was no treatment plant to begin with. But because you can't provide capacity, have any other options right now, this is an option. Working with the city instead of trying to throw up roadblocks, we don't understand, we don't wanna do it. Saying, hey, work with us, we're trying to show you ways to make this work for the city as well. And understand the liability, what you don't wanna deal with, and not have to worry about future problems, okay, I get that, I'll work with you on that. But understand, making me wait two years or five years is really a financial difficulty, that that's what this bill is talking about. You don't have the capacity, you don't have a way to give me, even if you're five miles or five hundred yards away, you don't have it for me. You don't have an option for me, I feel like we found one, and all we're asking for is, hey, look at it with us. Let us work with each other and try and find this as a way to work, because it works in a lot of different places already.
Between, uh, developers calling me and engineers calling me, we'd probably have to eight to ten projects here. That wanna go ahead, in Centerton, that they can't do a thing, so they're coming to us saying, please make this work, please make it happen. And it does say in B, alternatives, that this is alternative, no sewer, cost of going to NACCA or wherever they're going, that's very costly for a developer where he can do this on a temporary basis and hook up to wherever, you're gonna hook up in two years or whatever it's gonna be.
You're not the only developer that's wanting this.
No, we have a lot of developers.
I think a lot of the other developers, um, and again, I understand that, you know, we've all struggled with this communication issue. Um, and I looked at the, the Centerton Utilities website today about, you know, more transparency, more stuff, there's absolutely zero about that, or August twenty-sixth special commission meeting on that, zero. They don't even put it on their site that they even had the meeting, let alone any information about that.
That wasn't their meeting, that was our meeting.
So if you're looking at the Centerton Water Utilities website and wanting information like the developers are doing, because they can't make the meetings, it's not even showing up there that they even had a meeting with the city council on August twenty-sixth. Alone here, here's a YouTube. May not be thought on the Centerton Utilities one, is my point. Where a lot of the developers go and look for information about what the Centerton people are doing.
You're basically saying he's being both places.
Yeah, so I'm saying it's, it's not there, so you, most guys that are, that I, we're talking about, that are also looking at these systems, you told them, hey, go look at the Utilities Department website. They had a meeting on the twenty-sixth, they go and look. And it's not in there.
I think the defense on that one that has made it, that was here, it was, it was our.
Special City Council.
We actually.
But understand the disconnect, this is what I'm talking about.
Have been talking to them, they, they put stuff on there, uh, no, no big defense on that, but they are putting stuff up and, and working to even have more transparency, so I, I think it's headed in that direction. Uh, but I did have a question for you, Brian. Let's just say, let's say we said, okay. Would they still need to, according to B, go to the state and the state individually approve this based on this, or?
I, I don't know enough about this to, to give you an answer. I'm gonna answer, I can, oh, I can indicate is utilities has, have an attorney, their attorneys advised them, what they've advised them for whatever reason, I, I suspect that they've looked into it.
As it, as it says in B, that the applicant seeking approval demonstrates that there is no other viable effective alternative by submitting a feasibility study.
And that's not my question, uh, the question is, question is, if we give the okay and then you go ahead and you do it, and then you're actually not doing it the proper way. I'm saying, are we given the okay and you're building it based on us, or?
It has to be approved and asked to do.
Still a state permit, you guys are just saying, yes, you can put them in our city. We have to go through all the engineering and approvals with the Health Department and the state, ADQ. So you're just the first one that says, yeah, you can do it, but you've still gotta go through the state. This still has to go.
It's no different than what really happens with the rest of the stuff in the planning department, you know, we submit a preliminary plat and all the other stuff. The Utility Department looks at our water and sewer lines and then they sign off on it, and they send it to Little Rock. Little Rock's gotta look at it and they've gotta sign, it's no different, it's the same process.
On this, um, I mean, who, who would approve this, the utility or?
The utility first.
Would go through the utilities.
The utility first and then ADH and ADQ.
So utility has said no, I mean, that's, that's, that's clear, they're saying no, they're come, they've come to us. Yeah, cuz their lawyers are saying that they can't do it, um, so they, they've now come to us. Or do we fall into this discussion, is it just a, okay, thanks for coming, or?
The mayor has asked for them to send something, right, so that the.
Through them and they can look at it.
It seems to me if you start the process under section B there, in December, Decatur opens up and capacity is available. And basically it would be null and void, because then it doesn't meet the B requirement.
This, this goes back to everybody's thinking that December is the magic date, it's not. I'm at the part of the section of the town where the contrictions and all these pinch points still will affect me for probably a year and a half, maybe two, even with capacity. Even if the capacity is good to go in Decatur in December, I still cannot connect anything for probably two years.
Here's the thing though, I mean, it's not your money, it's not my money.
Yeah, I mean, I get it.
If the state comes back and says it's, they, you know, you can't use it in eight months from now, then.
It still has to be state, uh, State Health Department approved.
And, and they, actually, ADQ's got the final word.
But we don't actually make the decision, it's all admission, right?
In, in some aspect, the city does, because the first step usually is preliminary plat with the planning department. And when we submit it to the planning department, if the planning department doesn't know, understand and the people involved, the city don't understand, then they're all gonna just sit there and what they've been doing is pushing it around, well, it's his deal, it's his deal, it's he'll deal. And it just sits there and nothing happens, so that's what we wanted to try to do. Here's a viable option, and it still has to go through Health Department approvals, ADQ approvals. But if we start with the planning department and the planning department doesn't understand that this is a legal viable option and we just roadblock it right there, it never gets to the utility department. See what I'm saying, it's where.
We need to get the letter from state, AD, AD.
ADH.
Yeah, yeah, saying that it's okay.
And then if the utility department, then there's, they've been advised legally, then obviously there's a contradiction in what the.
What you should do is like, Josh is going, get, get us something from ADH, let's get it back to the Utility Commissioner.
Actually, the ADQ, so the ADH engineer said, they, the decision's made by ADQ, so they sent me to the ADQ and that's who said that we could do this, I'll get something from them.
Get into these good folks and let their, let their attorneys and their commission look at it and.
I suggest, uh, so we, we sell these all around the US and there's a nineteen seventy-two Clean Water Act is passed. Okay, every state in the US has their version of the Clean Water Act, is mandated down from the EPA. So, every state is already approved this sort of a thing provisional on the technology and the location. So what we're asking, at least, uh, for Gavin's thing, is to do what's called a no discharge permit. Which means we're as, we don't have the administrative side, we're not asking, can we pollute the environment outside of his perimeter, what we are, what the state mandates is that we demonstrate that there will be no discharge of waste outside of the boundaries of his property, that it has to be done through engineering. So all that to say is, yeah, we can get them to send a letter, but honestly, it's not gonna be worth their time because they don't write an individual letter for everybody, they've passed laws that say if you conform to this guidance, it's yes. So it's already done, in, in the sense that if you just read the, you know, the administrative code that's under no discharge permits, if we conform to that guidance, it's already a yes from them. But we have to keep conforming through.
Problem you have, problem you have is utilities lawyer is saying you're wrong.
So maybe we need to be.
Just gonna ask if you, like, cuz the attorney's usually at those meetings, and the meeting's Tuesday, next Tuesday.
Yeah, I'm sorry, they what?
Usually there's an attorney at the Water Commission meetings, so is this not, I was gonna say, is this not an opportunity for you to bring that up at that time? And maybe schedule a meeting or something, but at least kinda get it out there and.
There'd be full disclosure based on what I was, I think that maybe the, the disconnect and misinformation again, from what the, the commission's attorney is reading into it is different, because there is language, like I was saying, about a direct discharge. In other words, if you're directly discharged into a stream, river or lake, that's different, that's a different system, and yes, that has been stopped.
There are some alternatives.
Even then, it hasn't been stopped, it's saying if you can't afford it, but I guess what I'm saying is, there's no state in the United States that says private individuals cannot discharge so long as they conform, because we've gotta do the same thing that the town does. We can't, you know, it's not like you say yes and we go woo-hoo, you know. We have to go through a lot of trouble to demonstrate the engineering and we have to, we have ongoing monitoring, monitoring reports, laboratory testing, all of that, just like the Decatur system or anybody else. So there's not, there's no such thing as, cuz we go in every, you know, blue state in the Union, right? California, you can do it, Florida, you can do it.
Just to, so you feel better, I have to follow the same regulations that Decatur does, to the T.
There's nothing, you have not, I, I, I think it sounds good to me, I like the idea, Gavin. The problem is of an attorney that says you can't, whom is part of the Utility Commission.
We'll get that taken care of.
I would suggest you submit the feasibility study and get the approval.
Thank you.
Section B does, from the AD, and then bring that to them and their attorney and say, hey, we've done the feasibility study. By law, we meet these parameters that are written here.
Feasibility study is only done for that particular subdivision.
And that's what you're saying.
Approved by their attorney, it's approved by the state.
What he's saying, that's what I'm saying. But that law says that you have to do the feasibility study to show that you meet those requirements, so do that, get that approval, bring it to them and say, hey.
Sure, but if it's an a priori, no, why should he pay an engineer to do a feasibility study?
The law, I mean, the law says it.
Right, now, but I mean, that's kinda light, but if you guys are saying, okay, that law approves it, if the feasibility says yes, then it's a yes.
We're saying, take it to the. Show them their, their way. The case, I mean.
Yeah, the feasibility study is not, you know, like this, it takes some work and some cost to do that. Their attorney just has to read the law properly, cuz we're not sending the feasibility study to him. We sent it to the state, they approved it, it has nothing to do with their attorney whatsoever.
Feasibility study comes back that it's not feasible, then.
Then he doesn't go.
The attorney doesn't, then it doesn't.
Yeah, doesn't make any difference, and the state.
In about, in about one percent of the cases nationwide, it's unfeasible. It's almost always something that can be done.
Yeah, the, I mean, we follow the regulation, so.
The, the challenge has been, again, for me as the developer, trying to solve a problem that we have, that the city has that clearly has been a problem for a lot longer than a lot of you folks who even know, no offense to, you know, you're not knowing, you didn't realize how bad of a problem it is. Is the, the information that's exchanged is not been thoroughly vetted and gone through. That's why I did, it's why Skip Anderson had, and that's why you're having developers who understand there's options for us. And they're frustrated with the timeframe and the, sorry for the, well, lack of maybe understanding the laws and how this stuff works is an easier way to just get around not dealing with it. Well, it's cost us tons of money to sit there and do nothing, I mean, tons of money.
What's the issue with getting a feasibility study to, to do that?
There's really no issue, again, the challenge for us was, is if we do all the feasibility study, we can prove that this is all gonna work. We send it to the Planning Commission first, they're like, well, we've been told we can't, we can't accept this, because they won't, well, wait a minute. Here we go again, you know what I'm saying, so we wanna preempt that, we wanna stop the, the roadblock before it happens because we want the people that are making decisions, you know, who, who make the ultimate decisions, you know, to say, hey, look, y'all need to look at this, and this is helpful for the city, not just.
All the city needs to know is that the state allows us to do it, that's all the city needs to know. I mean, literally, you don't need to see a feasibility study on every project, that's not what your job is, that's the state's job.
The state allows it to be done, but under section B, we have systems within five miles, so you need to prove that they're not feasible to get that approved, section B.
Ours is feasible because it's not cost effective or whatever, that goes to the state.
And do a look, do your homework on the front end, before we come and change city policy and planning procedures and all that. And then come to find out, well, maybe it's not special.
I guess what we want is a provisional yes, because it's gonna cost him thirty thousand dollars for a feasibility study. Now, if it's an, if it's an a priori, no, if it's like, no, we, we've passed a policy that says, no, it doesn't matter if the state says yes. Now he's out another thirty-five thousand dollars.
It sounds like you guys have indicated that you'll be able to communicate with the utility attorney and, uh, and convince the utility attorney that you guys are uh, correct in that, so I mean, that would be my advice at this point. Do that, provide them with some documentation, because I'm gonna recommend to the council to, to follow the legal advice of, of utilities.
I think Don has something, Don, you got something? I thought I seen you raise your hand.
I got a couple things, first thing, they first brought this to us. We immediately voted to authorize our attorney to start drawing up the ordinance to allow it. And the law passed, let me read you the law, I know we, we've avoided doing this, but we bounced all around this without really looking at what it says. The applicant seeking approval demonstrates there is no other viable, cost-effective alternative by submitting a feasibility study for the connection to the existing publicly owned treatment works that has a collection system within five hours, that's us. Now, see this study? We have not. And we stopped the ordinance based on recommendation from our attorney, there's a reason why we pay an attorney, right? It's the reason why they pay you. Until we see a feasibility study and examine it well, the ball's not in our court.
So let me ask you, where does it say we submit this to you and not the state?
I don't wanna get into a position where we're arguing the, the, the bill or the law, regardless, I mean, the interpretation is gonna be for the lawyer.
It doesn't say to the utility.
It says right there.
B, where you at?
Effective alternative. submitting a feasibility study for the connection.
That's right.
To the existing publicly owned treatment work.
The connections to the public, you know, I have to submit the feasibility study to the ADQ, not to you guys. For the ADQ. That's what, because they have to approve. They have to say, no, it's no good or yes, it is good. The feasibility study goes to them. We'd love to talk to your attorney. We'd love to talk to him.
Any other questions? I mean, again, I know there's some semantics, but.
Documentation you can give me, I'll be, I'll be forward on.
Yeah, I know. It's again, it's more in the spirit of trying to work with us instead of against us all the time. Which is the, the repeated, you know, pushback, pushback, pushback. So that's, I think more.
We voted to approve this. Okay. And authorize our attorney. And I'm, I'm getting a little weary of contractors sitting here telling us how stupid we are.
I'm not the one with capacity problems.
Thank you all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all. Moving on. Yeah, come on, Melvin.
Oh, the step system is not a new thing in Centerton either. Twenty years ago, we approved one out of Ohio seventy-two at Big Sky. And they were already starting to build it and the next thing you knew, the state had come and done another perk test and turned them down. Nowadays, they pump the sewer to our sewer. But you know, for the last year and a half up to two, a month ago, we took care of hyphens. Cause they lost their people and you gotta be there nearly all the time. Cause then most sprinklers comes up in there, flood your field, then what happens? Look, it'll bet the heights, what happened to them? They lost their city springs out just because the perk system. I, I know them guys got to do things to build and stuff, but you know, if we don't do things right, we're going to be worse shape than what we are now.
Thank you, Melvin. All right. We ready to move on? So you say we are? We are, okay. So, so another business, I, I did, I did receive, uh, an update to a policy from Chief Harper. He's here. And on these police policies, you know, by our orders, it just, it just has to be approved by me and him and I just have to make the council aware. He, he did write a nice justification. All he's really asking to do is on our take home, uh, policy, that move it from fifteen miles to twenty miles. And, uh, he, he put on there where several other cities have, have done the same thing. So, I really just, I don't think you have to approve it. I think you just want an acknowledge receipt of it.
I think more important than the take home of five miles further is the fact that we can recruit five miles further.
It's true.
That's true.
Yeah. That's, that's the bigger side of it, I think.
So something like making motion to acknowledge receipt of the policy. Okay, we have a motion. We have a second? All in favor? Anyone oppose? All right, so.
Immediately or?
Yes, please. Yeah. Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, affect immediately. Good point. All right. So we have any other business? Here and none. Uh, a couple of announcements. Centerton Day is this Saturday. Uh, we hope you all can make it. Been putting the schedule out, putting a lot of information out. We have it all on our website. Uh, we have some volunteer opportunities. Anybody wants to volunteer? I think Wendy has some volunteer opportunities too. Coffee with the mayor will be the following Saturday, September twentieth.
It's surprising that you, normally when it's Centerton Day, you usually don't have.
No, we're going to have it. And then also, and I didn't put it on here, but the NWA preparedness fair will be the twenty-seventh. Uh, we, this will be our second year hosting it. They were here last year and they, you know, we went all in. They were very happy what we did and, uh, we'll start getting that information out after Centerton. Also mark your calendars for October twenty-eighth. That'll be our budget workshop. At six P M. Here, I will have, uh, food for you all. I don't know, we're, we're still debating that one. With that, I don't have anything else. Something.
What do we have? The population stuff in the board just?
Oh, oh yeah. Sorry about that. So I did put that in there. This is, I should have said another business. So these are just forecasts that were given to me. So I just wanted you to kind of see some forecasts, you know? Now, twenty thirty, twenty forty, twenty fifty, where, where all the cities will possibly be. Like right now, we're twenty-six, I know, uh, twenty-six, three ninety-six, I think we're about twenty-seven. But twenty fifty will be, you know, be almost double that, forty-nine thousand by projection.
Things like that right now.
Yeah. All right. So I'm sorry about that. I forgot. I did put that in there.
We'll need some stop signs.
Yes, yes.
All right. So would something like make most of a jerk? All in favor?